Hello, Marcus.
Oh.
It's the same one here.
About the same. I would say not a lot, but that would be a lot.
Lots of them.
Yeah.
Everywhere. You don't listen.
Oh, yeah. You guys been busy with all the wind and no rain and fire?
The city divided by the fire. Is there more rush than we are coastal, should I say, or so? Where the war farmlands, we don't have as much.
Was that your post? Somebody was saying. That was a really funny one about, please wait to set the world on fire until we have some rain here.
Yeah, that's true. But no, that is.
All right, we're just waiting on Saffian. Hi, I'm Ethan. Yep.
So we have drought contingency. Uh, we have our staff for. So we did not vote on that, especially.
No, because we were waiting for them to come out of the second. What we have to discuss on there.
Someone didn't turn that AC up?
Oh, is it turning still?
Yeah. Something smells off.
Yeah.
It's just that very nice. It makes it wet.
It smells like corn nuts.
That's always asking.
Yeah. All right, Deborah, just tell me when you're ready.
Did you check your battery?
I've checked it out. I've put the little little charge. Who is that recording?
All right, we're going to reconvene in open session at 8:55. There are no actions taken on executive session. Next item, discussion and appropriate action on adopting an ordinance, amending and updating the drought contingency plan. Scott?
Let me catch over here. Fourteen.
I gave you a second to sit down. It's number twenty.
Forty.
Yeah. Oh, okay, well, yeah. So you have in your packet, the drought contingency plan changes, amendments, they're on it. So the items that are being removed are stricken through, and the items that are being added are underlined. You'll see that in the stricken-through portions, most of it has to do with inclusion of the Edwards Aquifer. When they go into drought, then we would declare, right? So that, I guess that wasn't in the previous version. And then the other, there's some added guidelines for when we are not in drought, whether it's commensal uses that were not there prior, just to clarify those. Again, this is a somewhat boilerplate, if you will. In other words, it's just something we're required to update on a annual basis, and this is our attempt to do that. And to the extent that there are changes, we try to bring those to your attention in the formats that I just described. But are there any questions about kind of what we're doing or why we're doing it?
So why did we take off stage six altogether?
Probably because it's not required, but I honestly don't know. I don't know if John does either, but.
I don't know the last time we were in stage six, but.
Normally, because of laws, Edwards.
Have removed it. Gotcha.
And so we're prepared for just months.
Okay, that makes sense.
There's no stage six.
Right. Okay. All right. Any questions on that? Do I have a motion?
Move that we approve the, I'm sorry. Adopt an ordinance, amending and updating the drought contingency plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Who got that one?
Sheena.
Okay. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-one, discussion and appropriate action on approval of the River Bluff Electrical Project design and authorize the city administrator to go out for bids.
I think you should speak for this mayor. We had the, we just had our, our town hall meeting. Essentially, there's a couple of key design elements that we're, that we're asking for approval for. Number one, what you originally approved, which I'm still working off of from January of twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, was the $600,000 where we're gonna, we're gonna use our fund balance to do phase one of a multi-phase approach. And what we're now proposing is doing it all at once, and what we're doing will be different. When we originally proposed this, or Schneider originally looked at doing this for us, we were going to go in the front yards. And the reason we go in the front yards is that there, it's a lot easier to maintain in the long term. We got significant pushback from residents about doing that. Keep in mind that some of them already are in the front yards. And so what we've gone is, gone back to the drawing board with is to design something that would utilize the current locations of all the electrical devices, et cetera. And then also create a looped system where at the ends of each of these blocks, we're gonna, we would loop the electrical system together so there's some redundancy there. And we'd also change the phasing, so the legs, so we have a three-phase. You bring three-phase in from both ends. Right now, it's only serviced from the Geneva side of River Bluff, or that River Bluff area. We would actually bring it in from the river, so beyond Geneva and up on the top of the hill at the old bridge by River Bluff. So there's a couple of key element changes that I think improve the design. We anticipate the cost to be easily in the $2 million range, once we bid this out, but we are ready to bid it. Those documents are provided in your packet. And our next step, if you approve this, and this is recognized in the CIP, probably note, it's at a higher amount, going back to what we talked about with contingency and making sure we have enough money for each project. I think we budgeted $3 million for that project, but certainly hope that it's not nearly that high. We do hope to recognize some savings by, by doing it all at once. But again, those savings are kind of quickly evaporating when we look at the market and what's happening. So we would take that out to bid and give it, you know, the typical timeframe, four to eight weeks to bid that out and then bring it back to you all for approval. And then that project probably wouldn't start right away, because there's gonna be a lead time on getting some of the equipment that would be needed. But it would, it would start just as soon as possible. I believe what you have in your contract, or what you have in the bid package is twenty-four months. So from the time we issued it, we would hope to have the project done within twenty-four months. And we'll, we'll play that by year as the market kind of dictates, but that's the goal. Any questions about that?
No questions about that. There is something, I think you know what I'm gonna talk about, communication. So communication isn't outlined in here, and I think that we need to set some level of expectation on communication, and I think that needs to be included in their bid about how they're going to communicate. This is gonna be a major upheaval to, to the residents of River Bluff. It's a good thing, but it's gonna be major upheaval. And the biggest problems that we've had is not communicating well, letting people know what to expect, and we get tons of calls afterward.
We probably need to, rather than ask for that request, we probably need to dictate, this is what the expectation would be as part of the bid.
Right.
That part of that will be communication, door hangers as appropriate, that kind of thing. So I'll get with Schneider and see what we can work out.
Right.
So we'll have to add a section to this that's not in it?
Yeah.
So how can we vote on it?
I would, I would recommend you vote as approved with caveat that the mayor and the city administrator add a component that deals with communicating with the residents, expectations for communication with the residents. I, I think we can trust the mayor to come up with something that's adequate. I, I will provide the information, but I think you'll bless something that, you wouldn't bless anything that would be inadequate. Let's put that in motion.
All right, does anybody have any questions about the changes to the system or the way that we're approaching it? All right. Then do I have a, do I have a motion?
Yes. I make a motion that we authorize Snyder Electric to advertise for bids for design undergrounds, construction cost, installation on River Bluff subdivision, electrical upgrade with an added component that the mayor and city administrator stated.
Of communication?
Of communication.
I'll second that.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And Sheena, this doesn't mean you can leave.
Oh, no, I already got told that. I was already asked if I'm gonna run again next year.
You, you have been pushing hard for this, and I appreciate the diligence in this and to city staff for really working through this with Schneider Engineering.
I thank you.
This has been a monumental task.
River Bluff thanks you.
About time.
River Bluff thanks you, the city thanks you.
Yeah. Because it saves city money, too.
It affects us all.
All right, so the next item is discussion on the solar rate implementation.
So I wanna, we'll talk about it briefly. You know, as part of our utility rate discussion that took place in executive session, I did update you a little bit on the solar rate, but for purposes of clarity, the, the city staff for years has been utilizing a formula for figuring out how much we need to pay people when they put electricity back on the system. And the, what we've been doing is not in keeping with our current ordinance. Our current ordinance states that we will only pay them back basically the non-pass-through charges, right? And what those amount to at present estimates is around four cents, a little bit shy of four cents, about 3.039. What we've been paying them back is actually, and I was right, it's, I had time to think about it since the meeting to now. It was, it is, what we're, what we're rebating is our full rate. Our full rate's around 11 cents or so. So they're getting, right now, we're basically paying them for every kilowatt hour they put on, back on the system, we pay them the 11 cent rate. And that's not the way that should be happening, because there's costs that the city recognizes that they aren't having to pay, right? So we should, we should be only giving them about 0.039 at present rates. That'll fluctuate from year to year, from month to month, but that's the amount that we should calculate. It'll take some time to implement this. There's no vote required, which is why this is only discussion, because this ordinance already exists. I'm just advising you as a staff member that unfortunately, the city has not been following its own policy. We will send out tailored letters to each of the members, or each of the customers that currently participate. There's only about a dozen or so, maybe a little more than a dozen, solar customers, people who have solar on their roofs or elsewhere on their property, that are actually participating in this and getting that rebate. So what we'll try to do is prepare a letter that's tailored to them, to their usage, and gives them an idea of how much we've been paying back, that kind of thing. So I will, yeah, just again, no, no action necessary, just advising you what that stands for. I don't think that'll happen tomorrow or even this week. It'll probably be a little bit of time before we can get that changed in our system. This will require some changes in code as well, because the way it's set up in there, I believe, is incorrect, and is probably part of the reason we've been doing what we've been doing.
Did you have a question on the solar rate?
Just a question. My name's Van Johnson, I live on, living in Trankarant, one one two. Let me ask a question about that. I have solar panels, I'm not affected by you, but I have solar panels in my house. Why, if the house is, is pulling in this, and then they're giving these kilowatts to use of what they're not using, you're selling it to other users to use, and you're selling it at the regular rate, why not give them the same amount of money? It's just a question.
Right. And so.
It's not, you're wrong. Their panel brought it in, you will give four cents, and then you're gonna sell it twelve cents. It sounds crazy.
No, that's, that's not the case. So the, the cost to deliver power to the residences, there, there are generation costs, transmission costs, distribution costs. And so basically, what we've been paying them is, as if they are doing all of those costs that are sunk costs to us. So what, the idea of the solar is that you basically, the portion, the consumer portion, the portion that gets paid like directly from the citizens of Castroville for having that, that consumption at that point, that's where they get rebated, not the entire, it's kind of like, if you think about employees at a restaurant, they get a discount off of their own food. Well, they don't discount it less than it cost them to make the food, they discount it down to the, the price where it cost them to make the food, including all of those costs, and they just take off the profit. So all we're doing is taking off the profit and giving back, or just giving them back the, the profit portion of that. So the city is not making the profit off of that. Does that make sense?
We'd essentially be paying them the same thing we paid CPS for that electricity.
Well, and it's not quite that either. I mean, it's, we have, it gets very complex very quickly. We have poles we have to maintain, we have wires we have to maintain, we have people we have to pay to do that maintenance. And then we also have pass-through charges that come through us through CPS, that it doesn't matter if you give us energy or not, we had to pay those. And so, and we had to deliver that electricity to your house, whether you used it or not, or whether you put some back on us or not. And so that's what this recognizes. And it's, in a simplified term, the way you put it, it's not entirely true, our profit's not exactly represented by 0.039, but a good way of putting it, basically, we're saying, look, all these other fixed costs we still have, we're gonna give you back the portion that was the non-fixed cost that we could give you back. And I think that's probably more accurate.
That's a better statement, yeah.
And you did say Petrinkarant, so you already know that you're in, I think the CPS territory?
CPS.
Right, yeah. And so I don't know what their policy is. It's probably similar to what we're talking about tonight, but.
It's just a question I had.
Yeah, yeah.
It's roughly like you're, you're basically, you're, they're, the city's paying you what they pay CPS for the purchase of power, not the transmission and the maintenance and everything else.
The power costs only, yeah. Yeah.
All right, great. Good discussion. Okay, so next item is discussion and appropriate action on adopting, adoption of the 2022 Community Investment Plan, the CIP.
So I don't know how much discussion we want to have on this, because I'm afraid we could spend all night. The mayor and I talked about, well, the mayor and I talked about whether or not we wanted to have a separate workshop, and I think that will be appropriate potentially in the future, especially around, I, I think once we get, unless you all want to do it sooner, but after the election, when we get our new council on, which right now is really basically the same council with the exception of Mr. Sheerhart, who will, we'll have to figure out what we're gonna do there. But in conjunction with the budget and budget prep, we can have some of that discussion. The, the goal, and what I, hopefully I conveyed in the delivery of the document, is that this is every bit like the budget, in the, in the sense that we adopt the budget on October 1st, or prior to October 1st, and we have the very first budget amendments, like the next week or two weeks later, because that's just the way budgets work, there's always something that wasn't contemplated in the budget, and it happens pretty quickly. So in the same sense, this CIP is meant to be a living document. For instance, the projects, we know the costs that are there are only rough estimates, and the timeframes are only rough estimates. And as we, for instance, with the River Bluff project, I have fixed costs in there, I have timeframes for when those costs will be realized, but as we do the River Bluff project, that's what the reality will be. And it won't be, I can almost guarantee you the numbers that are in there. It'll be something different, be higher or lower, sooner or later, it'll be different. What I really am looking for from council, and I'm not looking for a hard, let's, let's put this in, chisel it in a tombstone, but I would like to, some, some, at least a general agreement that the items that have been identified, the prioritized items and the things that have been funded, are in line with what you all are seeking to accomplish from a capital improvement basis. And I did a poor on words, and the way that this has been produced, that we're calling it a community investment plan, I'm afraid some people may think that we're talking about how we're gonna invest our revenues, that's not at all what this is. But it is a, a example of how cities invest in their communities, because there are opportunity costs, as there are with anything else, and you can do all kinds of things with this money. But after, you know, we had those capital planning retreats and meetings, we came up with a prioritized list. This list is very, very similar, if not almost exactly the same, as what I sent to you in maybe August or September of last year. So not much has changed. What I've, what I've done is, one, validated some of the neighbors with our engineer and put together some plans. The areas where I'm gonna bring back to you for, for more input, I think in the future, where we really, I'll break it down this way, too. From a utility fund standpoint, we've already got a list of priorities, and there's not a lot of flexibility in how we're gonna spend the money on the utility fund side. We're gonna lean heavily on our engineering partners to guide us in where those dollars need to be spent, whether it's at the sewer plant, or sewer lines, or lift stations, or water lines, that sort of thing. So from a policymaking standpoint, frankly and candidly, I don't expect a lot of input from you all on those items, we have engineers to weigh in on that. On the general fund side, that's where we're probably gonna need your input, and even on the general fund side, since we've already made a commitment to streets, the vast majority of the money that the general fund has borrowed. So we've borrowed $5 million, which would carry us through two years. At least half of that money, we anticipate spending on streets. And we will bring, including this plan, it's not, it's really supposed to be kind of an appendix to the plan, if you want to think about it that way, is in that street section, I went ahead and gave you kind of the phase one and phase two. That's, you'll, you'll see that there's phase one, there's some river, some streets in River Bluff, and then there's Naples, and I'm trying to think of the other street that's highlighted, that's there. There you go.
Amelia?
And Amelia. Our, our concept there is maybe to partner with the county, we'll see if they can't come in and help us on those streets, and then we would contract out the streets that are River Bluff. One of the big factors that's kind of determining staff's recommendation on which streets to fix, part of it is the state of the current street, like how bad it is, but part of it's also whether or not there's utilities underneath those streets that also need fixing. And the fact of the matter is that both River Bluff and Country Village, for the most part, the underground utilities are fine. We don't look at needing, needing to have to mess with those very much at all. And the streets themselves are not in very good condition, so they're high targets, if you will, are, are easy targets for street repair. We do recognize that there are streets throughout Old Town Castroville, if you want to consider it that way, that need repair and need investment. The challenge with those streets is that the vast majority of them have water and sewer repairs that also need to be conducted. And so we're gonna have to be a lot more thoughtful about the timing of when those streets get fixed. The few that you see listed in phase one and don't really have a whole lot of utilities underneath them that need to fix, are there, that's the reason we're able to make those repairs. So that's Naples and Amelia. And then the second phase, I believe, I just forgot, the one that's got all the drainage on it, that's on the south side.
Athens?
Athens. Thank you. Athens streets on it. But obviously, Athens is gonna, we probably have to think about how we're gonna do that as well, because if that's gonna be part of a drainage plan, or whatever we end up doing, we're not gonna want to just go in and do that street, we're gonna want to do that in conjunction with the drainage, which is, I think, another, part of the reason that's in kind of the second phase of this bond. But point is, you all are really gonna, as far as being able to provide policy direction, it's really more on the general fund side, and it's gonna be what streets do you want to do, right? And what kind of, what, what form does that street's plan take? And certainly Devon's been putting a lot of thought into this and has some, some recommendations for us all. And then the second, secondary to that is, is how we're gonna spend that parks money and the planning money. We've already made some commitments on the planning side, we're gonna spend some money on drainage, about a quarter of a million dollars there. We're gonna spend some money on putting together a GIS system, haven't, that's an unknown quantity, that'll come forward to you, but that's been plugged in as a potential money. We're gonna do UDO, we've talked a little bit about that. Again, we haven't committed, but that's, that's some money that I've put in there for planning. So really, when you boil it down, there's kind of just a finite amount of money that you all are gonna be able to help me understand how to spend, and it's, I would, I would suggest that it's really has to do with parks and streets. Now, the outlier to all of this is downtown redevelopment. I have had some discussion with Josh Kempf, who spoke at the last meeting, about what that would look like, and I think that the way we're gonna treat that is not try to look at the entire downtown initially. He has a timeline he needs to work on for trying to get the barbecue joint that he mentioned, he didn't say a name, but he said it's this highfalutin, great barbecue place. So he has a timeframe to work in, and what we're gonna try to do is just focus on those two blocks, and I'm gonna treat that more like any other development agreement, any other development that we're trying to support, rather than try to look at it as a downtown, let's look at the whole picture project at this stage. It doesn't mean that we can't look at it in the future, it doesn't mean that it can't be part of a larger process, but for his need and for his timeframe, the thing that makes the most sense is what can we do just on that development? And to the extent that we have some money set aside for downtown planning, I think it's about a quarter of a million dollars there, that gives me some flexibility. When we get to that point and start negotiating with them from a development standpoint, we'll have the ability to do some of that. So I, that's a little bit of a correction, if you will, from the last meeting, where last meeting, we were talking about what can we do, can we put some numbers together, but let's put a plan together for that whole, that L-shaped Houston of September. The more and more I looked at that, it just, that's not something we want to rush into, and it's not something they need us to rush into. We certainly don't want their fix to be standalone and not be able to fix, fit into a larger project, and, and that's something that I think Josh will help us with to a certain extent. But there's also not the need to, like I said, consider it all at once, so, just FYI. More to come on downtown development, I'm sure.
No, that's good. That's good that you're looking at taking the smallest chunk feasible.
And surely, I said two blocks, it's really just one block, it's just that parastreet block. And we'll look at the electric and see if that's, makes sense and feasible, we'll look at the water and sewer and see what that's gonna cost, and he probably needs a grease trap and some other things, so we'll just look at that as its own, as its own project. That's my thought.
And I think that one of the ways that we, we need to, we need to figure out what our time commitment is gonna be on the street and utilities, repair, reconstruct, what all does it cost, like basically, what utilities are under which streets, what will it take to, to fix those? I, I want to see like a unified plan so that we can understand, right now it's nebulous. We have, we have utilities under some streets, and we have some streets that need to be fixed. I think that we need to, to the best of our knowledge, that we'll improve with the CIS. The.
The GIS system.
GIS, thank you. The GIS system.
And that's certainly what I think we're aiming towards. The issue for us is going to be the unknown of how much these utility projects are gonna cost us, knowing that we've got all that development that's on its way, and there's gonna be some city participation in some of that on some level. We need to just, that's part of the unknown, is, is understanding how those utility dollars are gonna get spent. Because right now, I mean, here's the thing that the city faces, that every city faces, I mean, kudos and congratulations for going out and borrowing money, and kudos and congratulations for starting the CIP process. But, you know, the caveat is, you have 120 million, 200 million dollars worth of projects. We're not borrowing 200 million dollars. We're borrowing, you know, less than 50. So there's going to be trade-offs, we're not gonna get to everything, we're gonna have to figure out how we, you know, there's going to be winners and losers, is all I'm saying. And, and you're gonna have to choose who's baby is ugly on some level, you're gonna have to say, this is where we're gonna spare money, and this is where we're not. And I will say this, you know, just, I don't want to harp on downtown redevelopment, but on the downtown side, one of the great things they have, you know, a feather in their cap, or, or anybody that's looking at doing downtown, is the ROI is, is very apparent, whereas the return on investment, if you want to think about it that way, isn't apparent in any of the other, you know, most of the utility projects are sunk costs, the utility payers, the taxpayers don't really benefit. They benefit from, from more sustainable services and more reliable services, and that's what we all want. But if you had the choice to put your money somewhere that actually had an ROI that affected a taxpayer's pocketbook and reduced their tax burden and that kind of thing, redeveloping any area, it happens to be downtown right now that we're talking about, but any area where you can make less blighted and more successful, at the end of the day, lowers your cost across the board, so just throwing that out there for now. But that'll be something, again, we can talk about in greater detail. So CIP, it's just, again, the one thing I want you to think of is, this is a work in progress, a whip, it's not the final product. We will change it. The big issue is, have we captured your priorities, and have we put them in the timeframes that you find to be acceptable?
All right, let's start. Sheena, is this along the lines, are you seeing any anomalies here?
No.
Okay. Counsel McGarry.
I feel like our, our work was well represented, thank you.
Counsel McGee? Okay. Counsel McGurk?
I agree with Counsel McGarry.
Okay. Counsel Madari?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to compliment the city administrator, I think this is a great plan. I think it's a tremendous improvement over what we've ever done. And I, I've been through the details of it, I like the way he's got it laid out, I'm I'm very pleased that it looks out 11 years, the current year plus 10 years. It's going to allow us, as a city council, to start putting that vision into words. And then that vision's going to translate into what the C, the capital improvement plan becomes. And every year, you're going to have different council members, different ideas, so the plan's going to change. But at least we're starting to look out beyond our toes. And I, I think it's a very good start, and I think you've really brought some great ideas for improvements from what we had before.
I think that one thing you'll see change, and just in the future iterations, is I'll be adding, I've focused a lot on where we're going to spend our money in the, in the next two years, because that's what I, we need to have as a group. But one of the things I think we're going to be doing more of in the future, and relying on some of our partners to help us with, is identify the unfunded items, so, and, and those will become unfunded depending on your choices. So for instance, we may look at a list of water projects and a list of sewer projects, and we're going to say, this is how much money we have to spend. So we have $6 million to spend on water and sewer in this year, and here's $28 million worth of stuff. And so everything that goes unfunded, or you don't choose to do, moves into that unfunded category. But that goes back to, I think, what you really desire, Herb, and what you've kind of been pushing for, is the ability to see, what are our outstanding obligations? What are our liabilities? Where do we need to fix things? Not just where we're spending money, which is very important, but where are we not spending money that if we had all, if we had, if we were Midas and had all the money in the world, where would we spend it? So that's not, I would just tell you, there's some of that in here, but it's not very much, not as much as I usually have, because we haven't been through those processes yet. We're just starting. But as we, as we go through that year over year, and as time passes, you're going to see more of that included into this plan.
Great. Yeah, great job on this. I, I really appreciate how you've separated out by funding source as well, that helps us keep a, a vision on that. And I definitely agree with hitting the next two years. That's what's right in front of us. We just need to set up our, or continue to work on our, our quantification of the priorities so that council knows with, of these, this is the impact of it, so we just need to work under measurements.
I think part of that's going to be, we'll, we'll narrow that down in that retreat that I hope we have in May. And we call it a retreat, but it's not a vacation, it's a workshop that we do here. We're not going anywhere else to do that. So just so you, for, for, again, disclosure, once you make this, adopt this, much like the budget brief that was in the consent agenda, we'll put this on the website. The idea is, this is a public document, just like the budget, and people can go in and look at it, and they can start to appraise it, and give you feedback, and that kind of thing. So this is intended to be a public-facing document, which is why you see the first 10 pages are a lot about, oh, what is a CIP? How does this work? And how does it get funded? And that kind of thing.
That's good. All right. Let's just make sure that we double-check the, the description, make sure that there's no question about it. I think we should do a final review, just to make sure that everything's very clear on there.
I noticed a couple of clericals just tonight, as I'm going back through it.
Yeah, and that, you know, honestly, as, as, I think each one of us can attest to, as you get started, understanding what the city finances are, they make a lot of sense now. But as you first start off with it, if you don't have experience with it, if you haven't looked into it, if you haven't really studied it and understand it, it's really kind of hard to understand.
Quite overwhelming.
Yeah, it's quite overwhelming. Even to people that have worked on budgets before, understanding how the buckets work and how, but from what I've seen so far, you've done a great job of explaining that. I think we just need to take just a fresh set of eyes and just make sure that there's nothing layering standing out that, that we might be able to fix with just a brief explanation.
Okay.
All right. So do I have a motion on that?
I move we adopt the proposed 2022 community investment plan.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Great. Thank you. Great job, everyone. I know that's been a lot of work on that. All right. Next item is staff reports.
So again, I'm just going to, partly in interest of time, but if you have any questions, let me know. I do want to speak to a couple of things. So the airport activity report, you may have noticed, has changed a little bit. That's more in keeping with what the mayor has kind of pushed back on me to kind of look at the data. So the concept is, obviously, we want to be able to give you some metrics that matter, and be able to give them to you in a way that's pretty easy to digest. So you'll see the very top page, it talks about revenue and fuel sales, and it's comparative in nature. So it tells you, here's how we're doing now compared to last year. And you'll see the numbers are actually pretty good, as far as comparisons. So, you know, everything's up, and that's, that's kind of where we want to see things. So that, so one, I wanted to call attention to that report and just the format that's changed, and solicit your feedback. And all feedback is good feedback, so any candid comments you have, you know, it's going to be right now, but if there's things that you want to see in these reports, these reports are for you. They're not for us. Staff loves generating them, but they'd love them even more if, if they were useful to you. So to the degree that there's something in there that you find not useful, or you wish you had a little bit more information, if you'd let me know about that. I'll also tell you that the other reports will also be changing. The, I've had communication with staff, I'm starting to set some expectations. What we're going to ask them to do is go through a process of defining success. So what does success look like for your department? And then within the same breath, how are you going to measure that? How are you going to hold yourself accountable to that success? So, you know, for the library, for instance, we just had a great library report at the last meeting. She talked about how we compare to the state numbers, and we're phenomenal. If you look at her attendance year over year, just for the library, it's not great, because COVID and all that. But when you look at it on a comparative basis, against the library statistics, San Antonio, Hondo, our library's phenomenal. It's really performing very well. So we want to be able to utilize statistics like that, but put it in a monthly basis where we can track how are we doing against ourselves year over year, but put it in that same context, the same format, as what the state would require. So what is our, I believe the format in that report was per capita. What's our per capita attendance, and how is that performing? FYI. I don't think I have anything else to report in there.
On these reports, for instance, I, I really like the code enforcement reports, especially where they go to the details for where it says the complaint was filed. Could they just add something, I don't know what the complaint was? And because, you know, I'd be curious to what some of these, but the fact that they had the listing down there below, and then a, a, a brief summary above, that would help me a bunch. I like the finance reports, those are good. The, of course, the library and everything. When you, if you go down to the, of the parks, on page, here it's page 234 of 255 on the turnout, there's a, a financial table there that I don't know what it means.
We lost all the column headers.
Yeah, there's no header. Oh, is that what it is? Okay, I was trying to get to there.
And then down below where it says GL debit and GL credit, what's GL?
General ledger? So that's our, that's our general fund.
So I, on the top of the next page, there's this thing there, and I don't know what it really is saying.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
But, and then, but I like the little, you know, the summaries, those are good. Because I'm trying to understand everything that's going on. On your, Blue needs to clean up this little sheet a little bit, because it says, real simple, with cats. Cats picked up, cats euthanized or died, cats returned, cats adopted. Well, so, so that, but they don't say the same thing for, for dogs.
Right.
And I do have some people that very, keep asking me about it, but with four cats picked up, two returned owners, one about to rescue, where'd the other cat go?
Well, it does have to say, he has dogs adopted, released, dogs euthanized, dogs picked up, they're all zero. Dogs returned owners, there's two.
As in picked up and returned.
Dogs adopted, released, dogs, it's not the same order. So there, nothing happened on, or dogs returned owners too, but then saying the dogs were picked up, so where'd those two own dogs come from?
Right.
So anyway, and then there were 35 calls, but this list of numbers don't anywhere equate to 35. So I don't, I, it just, I'm just a numbers guy.
You know, I think a good way to look at this, the way that we've been approaching this, is trying to figure out what metrics matter by department.
Yeah.
So if you get a chance, just, you know, take a, a couple of hours and grab a report that's important to you, and say, this is exactly what I'd like it to say. This is what I'm interested in.
I just like it to be filled out completely.
Yeah.
And so I like the report, I just like it to be filled out correctly. But no, and, and, you know, everything else, it really gives a great...
Well, I will tell you, one of the things that I am going to focus on is comparative numbers, and, because, because just for me, so I want to know what y'all want, but there is something that I want too. I mean, it's, for me, as an administrator, it helps to know, how are we performing year over year, month over month? How are my resources that the city's allocated to, you know, that have been allocated to me, how are they being utilized? So for instance, an activity report like this, which is what we're looking at, really is, it only has surface value. It, it, if it's not comparative in nature, and doesn't tell me, okay, year over year, what does this look like? Or month over month, what is this, do I know, was I busier this month or, or less busy? I don't know, unless I go and pull out the other report and make the comparison. And I don't want to do that, I want, y'all have to do that. I want that to be done for me. So whether you ask for it or not, one of, one of the improvements, or at least I view as improvements to the reports, will be that it will be more comparative in nature, so that, again, as a policy, from a policy decision, you think about resources and resource allocation and activity, you can see where activity's falling off or picking up, that kind of thing, especially as we grow. I know that on the animal, one of the things we've heard over and over is that as we grow, we're going to have more and more animal calls. Well, you won't know that if they only incrementally increase. If this call, this year, month over 35, next month they're 37, and in 10 months, they're 48. If, if you aren't sitting there pulling out every report, you may not, you may, that may lose sight, lose sight of that. So I'm going to push back a little bit on some of that type of stuff. But I don't want to pick on Blue too much. This is something that I'm looking at all departments to try and do, so. But I am going to try to narrow it down to, to a few. I don't want them to have to, I, we don't have the staff for them to be full-time, I don't know, CPAs, where they're just going in, yeah.
I, I have a, on Kate's detail report for violations and everything, the two locations that's been out there, you know which two, it's still no update, all it says is filed in municipal court.
Well, on the page before.
It's, yeah, they're not listed.
One of them shouldn't be, if, it's one I'm thinking of, isn't in court.
There's two locations.
Okay.
The one at the top of the hill.
Right. That one hasn't had any action.
And then the junkyard.
Okay. All right. So if you, if you will email me what your, what your interest is, then I'll...
What their status is.
Right, right. But it, but just give me the specific address, that way we don't embarrass anybody here. But I will email, not just you, but I'll email the rest of the council what that status is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions or comments on the staff report? All right.
No?
No, sir.
All right. So our next item is executive session. Yeah.
Yes, please make it quick, we're out of...
It's going to executive session, just to remind the city that, I know, it's come to my attention that the illegal sign that's been granted on residential lot, the city's hands might be tied and might have to stay. Just remember, precedence has been sent recently that when a permit has been given, the applicant has a process to go up to ZBOA and ask for an, an adjustment to come into compliance or ask for a, to be able to keep it there.
Right.
So there's always that option on the sign.
Cool, thank you. Yeah, I apologize, I forgot that we were making sure you had a chance to speak about that, and we will talk about that.
Do we only do item 11 before we go to executive session?
Except we talk about doing that after.
Yeah, because we're, we're discussing.
Yeah, we need to remember to come back to 11 after executive session.
Just make sure I've got that. Okay. Just kick me if I forget. Not too hard this time. All right. Next item is executive session. Number one, the city council will meet in closed session under provisions of the Texas Government Code, section 551 dot 071, entitled Consultation with Attorney, to receive legal advice regarding a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter 551 of the government code, to include the following matters. The airport farm lease, dental office sign and zoning matter, utility easements, and Walmart water rights. Number two, pursuant to the Texas Code, section 551 dot 074, entitled Personnel Matters, and 551 dot 071, Consultation with Attorney, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. This is Brian Jackson, Chief of Police. To deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employees, Deborah Howe, City Secretary. To deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Scott Dixon, City Administrator. We're going to go into an executive session at 9:36.
Livestream's still on.
Your what?
Contacts. For a certain point, they get real drunk.
Let me run. And I'll run this one, and I'll run the other one, and I'll run that one, and I'll take those two. If they say they, I'll hold out, they might be, I can do it again.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to make some way to hide all the talk deal later? I will bring you up here. So, you're, you're watching, go back.
They showed me the YouTube link, guys, for exactly, sure, it takes you long, you guys were hanging, right?
You guys are watching, you guys are watching during executive session right now? And I was a YouTube here. If you go to that channel right there, she's 72, she's 72. Yeah, you go on there and click on the videos live, it'll be streaming.
Okay, so they're not, we don't know what really happened, that they went into executive session.
Right, so they're going to come out, and they're either going to make a comment, and they're either going to take action, or, or they're just going to come out and say nothing, which they can do at this point.
But I know they had, they had her name on it, the city secretary, and that guy right here in the middle.
Yeah, and I know, I know.
It must be a promotion or something.
Yeah, I don't know what, if, if they have anything to do with the same thing that she does, I have no idea. But, right, it could be a promotion or something. Yeah. We're going to find out. I know Kate's hat's still, you know, hitting on one end, I get it on the other, and, you know, you know, well, I'll tell you, I'm going to go outside. We'll go outside and smoke, guys, while we're waiting for them to come back here from executive session. We'll go outside and smoke. It's going to be quiet right now.
It'll be scary to him, to get his camera, because it's been a while.
Okay. Yeah, they're going to be all, they're going to be all up in there, they're going to wait a whole night. All right, guys, so here's the deal, during executive session, one of the things they're going to be talking about is the staffs and the chief. So they can very well come out and say it's fired, they can come out and say nothing. But we'll see. I'm going to go outside and smoke, and I'm going to move my camera around, because I'm sending some other issues, like with the connection. The connection is what's causing the issue, so I'll get that fixed. But right now, hang tight. We're going to go out if you want. I got some of my beautiful shots, so we can do some good, uh, I don't know how the livestream does on this one, I'm gonna shoot it first. I left my, I left my big camera at my house on my counter, because my wife didn't share it with me. It's not my fault. Alright, guys, bring all that back.
She lost 3000. That 14,000 foot, a joke, kid?
Oh, yeah. She jumped out of an airplane, and the wife jumped out of an airplane.
Man, I would have passed out.
Talking about.
I would have passed out the time we had exited the line.
Yeah, but you know, that's pretty high. 14,000 feet is high, actually.
I have problems handling a pension.
Right. It's a bedroom, huh?
Do you have a restroom back there? I guess they do.
Uh, I, you know, I haven't seen any reason to take my clothes off. I don't see any period going on here right now, but that could change anymore. No, really, honestly, I don't see any, they've been a lot of people. You know, it's been a very boring week, talking about just regular city business. I had to come out here early because you just never know when they're, uh, discuss what I'm here for, so. And, you know, they may come out tonight, and they may not say anything about what they discussed concerning the chief. Or they may say something, so.
You should go ask him yourself, and he gets the building.
The chief?
Yeah.
The chief is here, I'm sure he's in executive session with them. He probably came through the back door. Really, do you want me to go? Is it exactly white cars? There's a guy in a white SUV. I'm not gonna say exactly white cars, but- There was a guy in a white SUV sitting out back.
I'm almost positive he's there. So, now you gotta decide, you don't have a camera.
No, he can catch what's going on on the inside. Hang tight, guys, I'm gonna read this. Alright, let's see. So, did you hear the anger? Did you catch all that? The check is on the blue sheet, it's here, and the blue sheet coming out here. So, well-
The second entrance on the other side of the door, in fact, that's where, for executive session, people, they bring in that door now.
Pretty sure he's here.
You want to-
No, I don't want to catch him.
By the restroom.
Well, I want you in here, static filming the livestream, and they're announced. If they gonna say anything. And I'm gonna go out back and try to catch him, and ask some questions.
That's your thing, yeah.
Yeah, that's my thing, so I'm like that.
So, yeah, you go catch him out there.
There was a, there was a guy sitting in a white SUV, when I looked at my truck. Small, I'm gonna show you.
He's tall, he's a-
He's a beard, dude, I'll take him to the small, that's okay.
Well, he probably has a police beard, like a city issue, or something.
Uh, he's not driving that.
No.
Alright. On the table. Yeah. Well, I do appreciate the fact that you can't tell me who drives, so that's not a problem. You know, I don't need your disciplinary, you always bring in other hat. I appreciate you not telling me that, that's, that's admirable. I'll just have to do my investigative journalism job, and try to figure it out.
You're using the restrooms back there, right? The public restroom, over there.
Huh?
The public restroom's back there.
Yes, yes. Well, but they're only accessible, accessible from the inside or from the-
No, outside. They're always outside.
Oh.
I would love to lock them at night, but their restroom's open.
Okay. Yeah. It's cool. I'll, uh, figure something out. It's, uh, I can read my livestream. Yeah. No, how did I? I didn't say nothing, personally, I didn't. I suppose you, they can remember. There's two, I guess, to be like- Okay. Was very, I see nothing, I hear nothing. He's there, he's there.
Why not? It's been a long time since I've seen that, that old one.
In the journey, I actually had a older one. I think that was 1839, that, this was 16.
I was wondering if something, uh, that old was, I had to help the, uh, ran out of police, not police, the private department, with a search and rescue.
Oh, you went to the N S.
Well, there was a-
This is the copy.
I think the original was a copy. So, where I'm from, there's, uh, mines, boom. And they weren't digital, so they didn't make it to the future, I bet. This was late 90s, so the internet was just barely dead. And it's like, okay, we've got loads more, and it's like- So, you pull up maps like this, and it's like, okay, yeah, okay, need to update your maps, this one's closed, that was closed. And part of the things that they had me do was go into these files. Hold it verified. Books, one of those things where it's, yeah, pretty much verified before anything happened. That's crazy. It must have been a couple, too. Yeah. At least the kit was handled.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, the mine, that's right, that's right.
But, yeah, just to have them all updated, that's crazy. But there is a positive point to it, though. But, yeah, a lot of the, uh, my chaps were, I mean, yeah, they had the maps. But what I knew was not fully complete. And that was only because I didn't have, uh, climbing gear. And I'm one of those people, I have a fear of heights. Just to tell you how bad it is, I'm one of those people, if you were to put me up on 10 feet, I'd start shaking. Is that the cups, where are they going, right there?
The cup's always in here, sometimes, he's in order.
I care if it breaks it, or-
Yeah, he's in there. There was a, uh-
I won't judge, if he needs to take an acid, that's a big, a half a glass.
No, the cup's there, too.
Yeah, I know. I used to be a, uh, I'm a security guard, so I know how that is. There in Tucson, Arizona, there was good cops, and there was bad cops. But the good cops always have to be easier with you, though. But the good cops always have to be easier with you, though. Oh, yeah, extra good citizen, I was on that, OETL.
Was he the one that... That was yelling in front of the city hall?
No, that was...
Just Patrick.
The one that was yelling in front of the city hall that would be, uh...
No, I want to know Patrick, because I never recognized him, I was over which way.
But he goes by name, he was now Patrick.
Yeah, wasn't he?
Well, he...
The officer, the, the officer tried to take him when he was yelling at him. And then the sergeant, why are you doing it, well, he was yelling. No, that's his first woman, right, you can't do that.
I think that's him.
Because he's real vocal, he's real brash.
That sounds like, um... What is his name? I, I forget his name, but the best way to describe Patrick... Uh, have you seen the, uh, cartoon called The Jungle Hill?
Yeah.
You know the song that's called Bobby?
Yeah.
Yeah. Bobby Hill, that's the best way to describe his looks.
Okay, okay.
Oh, yeah, extra good citizen, I was on that, OETL.
Yeah, okay.
It just, it took you a while to remember it.
You can do your brother's... What? No, no, you can call it to this problem. Yeah, this problem, the end burger, if I say it all, everything dies.
Yeah, he does that kind of stuff all the time. Yeah, you should have seen him when he went after the S A P D officer that signed the fourteen-year-old kid to the ground. You know, the kid was a boy.
Okay.
You know, this S A P D officer, I mean, he's just as big as you, Walker. And here's this one.
Fourteen-year-old, yeah.
You know, so it's like, kid, that was like called out.
The thing was a little light back there.
Yeah, and Jackie called him out and, you know... The dude, you know, it was- it was one of those things that started to escalate and... Jackie does his things where it's like... He escalated and he escalated and... He fries their nerves, maybe, and all that thing. But, yeah, I remember when I first seen his, uh, videos. Half the sucking egg I didn't like.
Really?
Yeah, it's such a good size, full size.
I don't remember who it was. Got me caught up there. There were people that liked him, I'm sure.
So meeting your...
Yeah, their executive session on the decision. They've been in there for about thirty-five minutes, maybe?
Five more?
Yeah. Hey, evidently, you know that whole sign where you're at the dentist? You know about that? I was told by, um, by someone in the city that because the permit was given... The city's hands are tied. They came and they bought it. Like, excuse me? He says, "The man who's giving away the permit was given an error for somebody to go to Z U A and ask, 'Can you give us the permits?'" And we did. They gave the paper, the permitted error, and they came and asked, "We can do it anyway." And nothing we get to. So I told their attorney and the board, represent them in session, said, "We're in for president's, it's been set. They can go in front of the Z U A and ask it. That sign can stay there."
Well, the sign's been put up already.
Mm-hmm. And also, presidents, it's been said that they... I don't remember on the, um... I can't remember on the shelter on, uh, Lafayette, where they asked, they came, that carport.
Yeah.
Did they give them a cable for that carport up at first or just the company? I don't remember that.
I noticed the... Was that on a corner?
Which one?
When you told me, huh?
No.
I noticed they have some houses that are, uh, they... Big as this building. Set up in the backyard.
Oh, the one right in the middle of Constantinople. Well, it's on, um, that's going to be Florence. On Florence and Constantinople.
So where's that?
One block to the east. Or one left to the east.
I- I just went, uh...
It's gray and it's double door?
No, it's not double.
Oh!
Eight bar. Oh, that's a lot, if you look. I mean, it's like, how long? It's real high. What's that count? You, it's all the, uh...
Sasa?
It's down from across from me, so like... It's almost driving around. I know she's... They gave a permit after that sign.
Well, like I said, the same thing with... They gave a permit to the buildings. Shed. And they were both...
But most of the shed over there?
Yeah, it was on...
No, but this is up, right?
Yeah. And me and that person, I knew it was a young man, so I told him that. I got it burnt to ground, the only we took was six thousand dollars of concrete. What's the difference? I, uh, this is just that president's on a lot of things. They're allowed a sign to stay. And- and I get permit for something, and if he's out of a permit, no one can say, "She..." The lawyer said, "It's okay." As soon as our president's... Just think, they'd be tearing down and go back to those. I got out of the water. And then- and then the doctor, he walks by me and kind of rashes me, "Well, you know that the car show one next to me got sold."
Got what?
Got sold, match to his property? Well, they sold- they sold it to Mr. Medina, that doctor. But if you go to his website, his sign on his... Uh, on his, um, structure, real nice and curvy, all no payments.
I didn't know he had sold it.
Recently, apparently, recently. And so he- he basically, we're lawyers on that property. Okay, they did, they did. It's legal, but you got to visit. You should burn them out, clearly. But Wood and Jackson, well, you know, you work over that, but Wood and Jackson saying he got sworn in as a co-defendant off the circuit of Ambe. It was the first year I got sworn in. I asked the question, "What about those things that aren't, you know, we weren't legal, but they're already on it?" He says, "From this point going forward, if something becomes illegal and we overlook it, we're going to correct it." I can go back and find it. I guarantee it's not true.
In there. She always push it.
Right?
She was looking there and then, um... She got to look in this little, they got houses crossed and practically they got everything on fence side.
Where's that?
Cross street. Yeah, that if you... If you do a lot of houses, look at that fence side, you'll see a whole lot of...
Oh, yeah, I- I know exactly what you're talking about because that person's asking the question about that. And it's been repadded. And it is legal. It repadded. You know, by neighbor's house. Directly adjacent to you or across street from you?
Oh, not across.
Okay, so we don't...
I love the next...
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, that's interesting. It's all... It's like they build a... They build a- a storage house for... A concrete... And it's... I even saw... And I didn't know that side. But they said, "Oh, okay," so it's okay, so they done it. You can just go buy that list on...
Oh, yes, I am. I'll bring it up tomorrow. I see it, I'll talk to the girl tomorrow.
Well, I don't talk to the lady, but I don't want to know that either.
No, I'll take her.
But that...
She's right over there. Because me and my counselor in part of the couple, we talked about, um...
She went over to the lady and told her that he was a cop, and she failed to believe it. But I don't understand why. It is a bit messed up that we are...
Have you ever seen these, um, these loggers who are trying to, uh, catch cats, you know? Have you ever seen these loggers that keep crossing cattle on- online? There's one up there right now trying to catch someone walking out, helping out this... I don't know what we...
No, yeah. So much listening to that.
No, 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 there is outside ways, so like you use outside. So if you watch that, if you do the streaming, it might...
Don't look back either.
Look, the door's open.
Uh?
Door's open. How dare this one from the office to her office? I couldn't see anybody in these, but it's a house. All right, be careful now.
[S01]I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
But if you provide the audio content, I'd be happy to help you with that.
If you have any questions or need further information, please let me know.
Thanks for your time.